Good evening. On the school committee to order, Thursday, January ninth, six thirty-five P M. Twenty twenty-five. On the agenda, it says twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-five. So have a correction on that. That's okay. First item of business is statement regarding recording.
Good evening. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in this meeting, you understand that the recording could contain your video stream and your audio stream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you if you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. Recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat within the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending the recorded meeting may have aspects of their personal data reported if they actively participate or not.
Thank you. Good evening. We have students this evening as well when we listen to the and hear from student advisory council. Before that, we need roll call for attendance.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh? He's on there. He's having trouble with his audio. Mr. Deschamps?
Here.
Mr. Willannon?
Here.
Ms. Garvey? Ms. Cartier?
Here.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Here.
Ms. Muck?
Here.
Mr. Afonso?
Here.
Mr. Wigler?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Ms. Reeves?
Oh, here.
And Mr. Brophy?
Here. And just to confirm, Dave Marsh?
He put in the chat here.
Okay, good.
He's having trouble with his audio.
Again, as we've done with our agenda, item two is the consent agenda. Unless there's a motion to pause approval of minutes. Also have an acceptance of thirteen gift cards donated in names of teachers in lieu of teacher gifts. So we can do that as a whole. If less.
So move.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Second, any comment on the acceptance of the thirteen gift?
Just that those gift cards will be used and/or were given back to families during the holiday seasons.
Good. Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Afonso?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Student Advisory Council, I'll turn it over to superintendent.
Mr. Carlson and Ms. Cranston, our principal and assistant principal are here from Ruggles Lane with some of their students and
There were some staff too this evening.
And staff, we're so happy to see our staff as well.
This evening, you're going to hear from Liam, Annabelle, and Avery, three of our fifth grade students. And I want to thank Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Whitaker, and Mrs. Butter for also coming along. And Mrs. Cranston is here as well, our assistant principal. But we want to thank the school committee for the platform. We felt it was an appropriate time to kind of take a look back, but also forward and think about some of the culture building aspects that we have at Ruggles Lane and what better view except through the eyes of our students who get to sort of live that every day. And when we think about the ideals that we sort of push toward and strive for every day, when Mrs. Cranston and I were considering some student speakers for Liam, Annabelle, and Avery, they were easy decisions because every day they come in, they're ready to work, they're responsible, respectful, and they set out those examples for our younger friends. I want to call out our fifth grade teachers because I know they take it very seriously in order to prepare our students, not only for the middle school, but to make them the best role models possible for all of our younger learners that are in the building. So I would like to have Liam and Annabelle and Avery come on up and share our slides with you. And they're going to kind of walk you through three different elements that we feel are contributing to our culture at Ruggles Lane.
Mr. Carlson, as close as you can get him to that table as you can be.
Hello, everybody. My name is Leah McKenzie, and today I'll be showing you, telling you guys about our PBIS program.
Next slide, please.
RLS rocks, and here's why. PBIS. PBIS stands for Positive Behavior, Interventions, and Supports. PBIS is not a program, but a set of best practices that increase student and staff well-being through proactive measures. The framework for PBIS includes establish expectations, teach expectations, positive reinforcements, and restorative consequences. Next slide, please. PBIS and our star reward system. At Ruggles Lane School, we focus on students being respectful, responsible learners who contribute to our safe learning community. These ideas define expectation we have across all settings within the school. How it works. Educators teach expected behavior lessons developed by our PBIS team this year. Our focus is on the shared spaces across the building. Hallway, cafeteria, recess, assembly, et cetera. Students are acknowledged for meeting expectations. They receive a class star. They are, these are displayed outside every homeroom until they reach twenty stars. As homerooms reach benchmark levels of twenty stars, they cash in for a reward and the big board in the main lobby is updated. Each level adds a new choice item for cash in. Next slide, please. Fun facts about the star system at RLS. Homerooms at RLS have cashed in a total of forty-six times, including nine hundred and twenty class stars. Students at RLS have earned over one thousand class stars since the start of the school year. Students can cash in for an extra recess, a picnic with the principals, an extra special, a class movie, and a class spirit day. Any questions about the star reward system at RLS? Yes?
What's your favorite reward out of the list?
I would probably say a class movie because that's an hour and thirty minutes that you don't have to do any work. Any other questions? All right, I'll be handing it off to Annabelle.
Hold on, hold on. I want to say fantastic. Your honesty is perfect. That is part of character building, even with positive behavior supports. Absolutely. You were clear. You answered the question. And I'm glad that you said what the benefit was when the group gets to the amount of stars. Question that I have is, is this a K through six, pre-K through six model? Or is it five, K, pre-K through five model?
Yeah, I believe so. So anywhere from pre-K to grade five will be able to get the stars and be able to cash in for rewards.
Thank you. Anybody else for a question?
Yes.
What happens at the end of the year with the group who has the most rewards? Oh.
Oh, we don't, we don't do anything of that. I haven't been informed anything that we do.
Well, there you go. Maybe there's an opportunity away.
Okay. Any other questions? That it? So I'll be handing it off to Annabelle now. RLS, RLS rocks. RLS rocks began during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year as a way to recognize the students who are consistently meeting the school-wide expectations of being respectful, responsible learners who contribute to our safe community. How it works. Educators are on the lookout for expected behaviors and nominate a student for RLS rocks each Friday. Educators share their positive thoughts on a student with the principals. The principals send a positive email home on Friday, sharing the intent to celebrate the student's achievement the following Monday. Each Monday, RLS rocks role models are announced during our daily morning announcements over the intercom. Students being honored to receive an RLS rocks backpack tag and have their picture taken for our display case in the main lobby. Next slide, please. Fun facts about RLS rocks. Ninety-one students have been recognized as an RLS rocks role model since the start of the school year. Each month during our all-school meeting, RLS rocks role models from that month are acknowledged and stand. Since RLS rocks began last school year, we have connected with individual families two hundred and ninety-two times to acknowledge students. Any questions about RLS rocks?
Anyone? Perfect.
Annabelle, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is it really hard to earn a star?
Not really.
Not for Annabelle.
Nice job, Annabelle.
So to follow up, I mean, that was a good answer, but maybe, and it's offensive not really for you, but how about for the whole general school population, do you think it's realistic that pretty much anybody can earn something?
Yes.
I'm Avery Phelps, and I'll be talking about the all-school meeting. The last Friday each month is final Friday at Ruggles Lane School. On this day, we have an all-school meeting as well as a spirit day across the building. How it works. Shortly after arrival, students and staff meet in the cafeteria, typically dressed up following the theme for the spirit day. Teams are decided by the grade-level teachers who communicate to the building leadership team. Families are notified in advance through the Q News Family Newsletter. The agenda for all-school meeting follows principles related to responsive classroom morning meeting. Agenda items include review of expectations, greeting, share, activity. In addition, each meeting features the presentation of the Golden Desk Pen, live morning announcements before dismissing the students back to class. Fun facts about all-school meeting. Some spirit days have included wear orange and black, dress like a movie star, and pajama day. Building and ground staff award the Golden Desk Pen each month to the grade level who excels at maintaining their spaces across the school day, classroom, hallway, and cafeteria during lunch block. Some of the activities students have participated in during RLS all-school meetings are the Monster Mash, Would You Rather Thanksgiving Meal Edition, and Coal Wrapping Paper Scissors. Some of the share outs have included, I am thankful for, and if I could give a gift to the world, it would be the mascots from the Worcester Railers and Worcester Bravehearts attend our December all-school meeting to kick off their reading incentive program. Any questions about the RLS all-school meeting?
Any questions?
Yeah, so just an observation. So before the three of you started speaking, you all looked like this was the last place in the world you wanted to be. And I think you did all very well. So you really, you really did well for yourselves and your
Mark, I have a question.
Absolutely.
So talking about the stars, do you think it has helped kids that don't, that see you get a star, work to get a star?
Yes.
Is that behave better or act better because they see what you're getting?
I feel like since they added that, it's encouraged students to behave better so they can be announced and get the reward and
Good, good. It's good.
Anyone else? Again, as Mr. Willannon just said, perfect. Thank you for presenting. You were clear. You are excellent in your presentation. And once again, we want to say thank you. And I'll know this is not a program. It's an expectation. It's part of the culture and climate of school. I also want to thank your parents, you know, for being here, but also participating and supporting the culture and climate in our schools. So thank you, parents.
Annabelle, your mother said you were nervous, but you didn't look nervous at all. I'm proud of you, girl. You can talk to her later.
And even though some of us might talk a lot more than others, and I apologize. Do you recommend this program for other schools? We know schools do it, but do you, do you recommend it as well?
Yes, I feel like it helps students improve their behavior. And some of the other programs, like the Golden Desk Pen, can help improve students wanting to clean the building and have a clean area and space for us to learn and share.
Fantastic. Can you comment on, would like to make a comment?
Oh, well, I would just agree to what Avery said. I think it just encourages students to do the best that they can.
Well said.
I also agree with Avery.
Done. Thank you. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
I'm going to ask her way more questions.
Thank you.
Hi, Olivia.
Not there. Sage, what are you doing?
I went. All right.
Ella? Oh, um, I don't know. I don't think
Ella. Okay. Anything going on? You have to do any presentation, but how's the climate, culture, and feeling and expectations?
Um, all right, let's see. In terms of school climate, I think it's, it's pretty good. Again, like the phone thing, I think it is helping.
Okay.
Also helping me because I'm not like, I don't have it in my pocket, so there's no options. I'll just mention, I guess, a little bit about the swim team. So if you didn't know, I'm on the cooperative swim team with Gardner Hyde, and it's great. I've been loving it. I qualified for states, and I have two league leading times, so looking forward to that. And some leading times, so we'll see.
Good.
And I, I'm enjoying the program, and I know the other three students that are with it are enjoying it too.
What's your schedule like? When do you go to swim?
So it depends. The, the schedule's a little weird because practice times are different every day. But generally, a typical day will look like I go home for a little bit, and then I go to the Mount Wachusett for some practice, and then I go to my Y M C A for some practice, and then I go home.
Every day, you practice?
Most days. I practice every day, but most days I do both.
Wow. What's your stroke?
I'm a breast stoker.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Hundred yards, two hundred yards?
Um, I'm best at the hundred. But I've been getting a lot better at the two hundred, too. And now I've been getting better at the butterfly, too, which is interesting because I hate it, but I've been getting pretty good at it, so that's
Okay, what's your time in the two hundred?
The two hundred breast stroke?
Yeah.
It's a two twenty-five point nine.
Well, that's a good time.
Thank you. And then for ROTC, we had an extremely spaghetti, extremely successful spaghetti dinner. It's great to see some of you guys there. And we have a dining in coming up, so be good.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah. What did you think of your two-week break, just carrying?
I loved it. Because, see, with the one-week break, I, it's like, I don't know, it just feels shorter. Like this year, I had one week to kind of spend, like traveling and going to see family. And the other, I could just relax. It was great.
Don't get too used.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, around us, Wachusett went to school on Thursday. I know.
Kansas.
Ware did. So I knew some towns did, and Lester, Leeson did Thursday, too. And then I know another district did a Friday, they had Thursday and Friday off as students, and then had Friday for teacher development days. So they are looking in other ways of looking at calendars. Good. All right. We'll go to the administrative reports. Superintendent Schools.
Sure, so
Did I miss anything?
No, you didn't miss a thing. I'm just going to highlight a few things from my report. And I just want to remind you that, you know, we, we provide the report and we'll just speak to a couple different things, or we'll let it stand, and you can kind of read it. But in my section, there are just a couple of things I want to make you aware of. One is that I offered all of our faculty drop-in sessions with me to talk about budget and anything that's top of their mind mid-year. So this is something I did last year as well. I found that sometimes our staff that is really in the mix of things has a lot of really creative ideas about how we could do things differently that may allow us to be more efficient or more effective. So I had my first session today at Hubbardston, and I have to say, I really got some great feedback. I walked away with some really interesting ideas and concepts, so I'm super excited about that. So all of my drop-in days are listed in that first section. We do have, we did have last night our second municipal meeting. Some of you were there, so thank you for that. We're getting underway with our regional agreement work. So that letter is going out to the select board so they can identify their five resident members, and they'll also choose a secondary member that can be a silent observer or step in as an alternate as needed. We're just waiting on some dates from our legal counsel, so I can put those in the email so people kind of know what they're going to commit to. You may have heard with MCAS going away that each school district has to come up with what their competency determination is going to be. So we will be developing that over the course of this month. And then, Dr. Allen, I would like to bring it to policy review and reform. Next. We're continuing our work with
In February.
Yep, in February. We'll be ready for that. We're continuing our work with equity. There are a couple of things in there that we have going on. And then the other thing I talked a little bit about last time we were here, and I just want to update you on it, is that our five towns have gotten together to offer a fire firefighter program to our students. And we offered it to our tenth through twelfth graders. We have thirty-six students signed up. They initially said we can only take twenty-four, and they're so excited to have that many students that they figured out a way that they can get all their CPR certification done with thirty-six students instead of twenty-four. So as soon as they're up and running, we will have the students come and tell us a little bit about their experience. But they're going to walk away with their CPR certification, their stuff, the lead certification. If they're a senior and they wanted to become a volunteer firefighter, they will be able to do that after. And I hope that our towns will benefit from that. And we have our NHS induction next week. And each year, I get the honor of selecting our superintendent scholar. So this year, it is Matthew Erickson. He will have a nice write-up in the Barry Gazette. It's either in today's issue or next week, so I'm not sure which one she put in it. There's that. So then you have all the director reports. And if there's anything they'd like to speak to, I'll offer that to them. Or if you have any questions for me or anything on those reports, we'll give you a couple of minutes to look it over.
Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
When you brought up the MCAS, we're coming up with our own standards. Is that what you're saying?
Not really. We're coming up with a competency determination. So the standards are set forth by the state.
Okay.
So in order for
To call something different? When we, I mean, it seems like every school's got to kind of be on the same page, Charlie.
Yeah, this is, this is really where the challenge is. So I think it's going to be quite messy for this year because there wasn't a lot of preparation for how do we get everybody on the same page before this goes away. The Secretary of State, I'll tell you what we will likely do here at Quab and the Secretary of State of Education, sorry. I'm watching too much Netflix, I think. But the Secretary of Education had said, you know, one thing that he views as, as being really a great indicator would be if every high school across the state of Massachusetts adopted mass core. We do have a mass core framework. All of our students have to graduate, have passed all of the mass core requirements. So that is probably one way that we'll be able to do it. It's the students who struggle to show that proficiency. So for the competency determination, we may think about something like a portfolio or them showing their learning in different ways. But they have to be able to show that they have a tenth-grade understanding of math, E L A, and science. So we'll have to have a couple of different paths.
It just seems like before it went away, something should have
Yes.
It'll be back.
Well, it's not really going away. The testing's still happening. So we have retests coming up, and we're encouraging the students to take the retests for a couple of different reasons. But the tests are still going to be administered, just that idea. And you could, we could choose to say MCAS is going to remain our competency determination. That's all I'll say about that.
Dave?
I was gonna I took care of it.
Yeah.
So we call it.
So we could.
Any questions for any of the directors? Quick question. Building grounds. How was the emergency management meeting? And what was the kind of the next steps that were coming out of that?
It's kind of more of an exploratory meeting to meet with the towns and discuss what their plans would be in the case of emergency, if they were planning on utilizing our school buildings for shelters and how that kind of our role would integrate with theirs. Is basically what the meeting was for, kind of a fact-finding mission. And we see who certain schools would generate, certain schools would not, whether food could be provided at certain schools, whether showers were available, that kind of thing. Just to kind of get an idea of what their thoughts and planning was for them. We met with every town that old cam, I believe, attended and kind of went through that and got an idea of where they were and where they were in their planning stages, I guess, for this type of event. So it went well. Next steps really would, is really kind of on that to provide us with anything else that they may need us to do. And our role would be to help them.
Last time when we had the superintendent's administrative meeting with the town, select board and finance committees, members attended. We talked about collaborative ways of working together, if we can get generators together and things like that and be able to put towns together on a grant, because again, the Hubbardston put in for a grant for a generator and didn't get it last year. So more than merrier, even Dr. Marshall was here last night and mentioned that as well.
Hubbardston currently has a generator. They're looking to get a bigger one.
Bigger one, yeah.
Provide more power throughout the school. Ruggles Lane obviously doesn't have one at all.
Right.
Quab and this is pretty much the biggest, the best fit for anything that happens because we have the availability of the showers and a full kitchen.
Right, at the high school.
So that's kind of the things that we were discussing.
And just to, I know the superintendent probably won't be talking with you, but last night they were, that came up. That same discussion came up about, okay, we get it that folks like to be close to their community, whatever, if there is got to be an emergency that has to happen. But to get these monies, what is the best site? Would be maybe like the middle of the high school to be and to get that well taken care of.
Checks the most boxes, the middle high school.
Yeah.
Everything that you need, to be honest with you. And I know that back with the ice storm, that they did utilize it for that type of event where people actually did stay over. You have the shower capability, they were cooking food. So you kind of have, have the whole thing here. The generator obviously doesn't power the entire school, but power enough of it to utilize what we would need to do.
Any other potential? Any other potential questions for directors?
I would like just to draw your attention to the photos in the Director of Student Services report. So I think last time Jill was explaining how they've been working based on our student need to increase collaboration due to the students in our SOAR classrooms gaining skills and being successful and really growing in their abilities. So over Christmas break, our Building and Grounds team took down many of the cubbies that used to see in our SOAR classroom, and this is what they look like now. So our students are working in small groups with their teachers. They do still have some cubbies in case they need de-escalation. But I know this is from Ruggles Lane. So I don't know if the principals want to say anything about it, but we're very, very excited for our students and we're, we're so proud of them and the teachers for the growth that they've shown, that this is, this is where they're at. It's amazing.
Sure, yeah, I think what we found has been very well received by students and staff. And I think it does nothing but build the community within the classroom. And I think that they're taking those opportunities and it's amazing how much space is in there. So it's been very well received.
Big thank you to Jill for really working so hard on that.
Thank you. Just congratulations to, you know, everybody, I guess, for us being a national banner school under, under the Special Olympics Massachusetts program. And it's a great thing and just the enthusiasm that everybody has with this. I think it's one of the best things, it really is. It's tremendous, so congrats to us, I guess.
Anyone else, anything that's on Zoom? School community members?
We'll have another banner up tomorrow night if anyone's around for basketball tomorrow night.
My understanding is you have girls at five and boys at seven.
Six thirty, yes.
Give me one second, I can check.
Okay.
I thought it was 5:30, but.
All right.
We'll check.
Want to talk about the games?
Yeah, I heard five and six thirty, but I don't know.
Give me one second.
That'll be making sense with raising the banner after.
Sure.
An email available? Is that what you started on a schedule?
Start on the schedule.
To our UPIL, we sent down a general email to everybody to support it.
Girls are at five, boys are at 6:30.
Five.
And JV, boys are at 3:30.
Right. Superintendent, it's done. School Business Manager.
Just to point out, excess and deficiency has been certified. The amount is in the business management report. Rules, well, eight numbers have also been finalized. We received the first payment. The amount of the total award is in there as well as the first payment, which is not half the payment. I don't know, it's a DR math thing. Just want to let everyone know that we're going to be putting out the bid for heating oil on Monday. So any interested local vendors can get the bid either by coming here in person to the main office. It will also be available on the website in your packet of state grant awards report. Presentation of warrants, that's our last meeting, school committee meeting. Bi-weekly payroll warrants 13 and 14 were processed. Weekly payroll warrants 24, 25, 26, and 27. And accounts payable warrants 43A, 47B, 48A, 49H, 50B, and 52F.
Hey. Any questions? Julia? Good. For the subcommittee reports. As of right now, we have collective bargaining, our report, Buildings and Grounds and Policy and Review. So collective bargaining.
Yesterday, we were here, we negotiated, we began negotiations with the food and nutrition people. We set a two-hour limit on the meeting. And at the end of those two hours, we had a tentative agreement. So what we're going to be doing now going forward is we've asked the food and nutrition people to have their members vote on the contract. It's both working conditions and a wage package. And when they, when they vote on it and they approve it, then we'll probably bring it to the school committee hopefully in February for your approval or for your discussion and vote and we'll go for there. But one session, two hours, and it was, it went very, very well. So we were very pleased. And then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay. Questions today? Buildings and Grounds.
Okay, so we met on December 19. We first talked about the roof on the Hardwick Elementary School. Mr. Clark explained the problems with the roof and Hardwick's option of using MSBA money to fund that. We also talked about the windows, not as, less immediate concern, but they might be able to use a Massachusetts Green Community Program grant to fund that project. Food and Nutrition, Mrs. Biando, Ms. Biando wants to expand the menus at the middle high school. It would involve more prep work, so it's a little more time. Participation remains high. The elementary schools are the same throughout the district, which is different than what it used to be. So that's, that's an improvement, I think. And then we talked about the press block, press box and bleachers. And Mr. Clark shared drawings of the proposed press box and bleachers. The overall end-to-end dimensions would be almost 78, 178 feet. Four rows of seating that will be above the fence that borders the field now. And then it would have a press box itself, which would be eight by 24 and sit almost 11 feet above the field. So that would be, that would be a nice thing. We talked about how to pay for it and we kicked around a few things. You know, the administration kind of needs to help us figure that out. And, you know, we could, we could borrow the money or we could create a capital stabilization account, which would be kind of a complicated process, but we could do that. So we didn't make, make any decision on that, but, you know, depending here from the administration. And lastly, the New Braintree Grade School generator slash snow removal, they're not related, but they are. New Braintree has the newest generator in the system. And, but typically, New Braintree itself is taking care of repairs. It failed recently and needed service. The district has, takes care of the generators in all the other schools, but not New Braintree. So the other option, the other thing that's going on is we've been plowing snow data around the school and around the town hall, the town library. So we think maybe let New Braintree do the plowing and we'll take, and we'll take on the generator project, I think that's, is that correct?
Yes, so the agreement in the past had been, as far as the sidewalks, that we were responsible for in front of the school, all the way down in front of the library, around the library, and then around the town administration building and police department. So Colleen and I had attended the selectmen's meeting on Monday night of this week and had discussions with them with regards to snow removal and generator. And my understanding is, it sounds like we've come to an agreement that next year we'll take the generator maintenance and repairs into our budget. And next year they will start taking care of the sidewalks for the library and the administration building. We agreed that we would continue doing it through this year to allow them time to plan for it.
So is that the same generator, that same generator when we did the walkthrough last year or two years ago? In New Braintree? Right, so there was a space issue there, right? I mean, to replace it if we needed to replace it, wasn't it? It's, it's in a, it's in a kind of a confined area, if I remember right. So that if we were looking to replace.
Was that the one where the door was too small to move it?
Was it the door too small? I know there was a, there was an issue of movement if we wanted to do something with it, you could get a bigger one.
The generator in New Braintree is only a few years old and it's in a fenced area behind the building?
Okay, maybe it was the boiler or something.
The boiler. Maybe it's the. I think you were thinking of the boiler when we talked about replacing the existing and hopefully going with a lead lag so you have an extra boiler in case one failed.
Right, okay.
Because of the size restriction in there, we only could replace it with one, which has been replaced.
All right. So another question, are you done or?
No, I'm, yeah, I am done now.
Okay, so whoever can answer this, I know. So, so for those of us who own a home or something, so there's a program where, you know, if we buy mini splits or do something, you get, you can get whatever tax credit, you can get some sort of a rebate. I know for years, the city of Worcester, I don't know if they still do it now, but I knew somebody who worked in the city of Worcester in this program where if you own like a three-decker or something, your windows were falling apart or there were, there were some issues there, you can get a certain amount of money. I mean, you just went, I think, down there and filled out the whole form and you can get a certain amount of money to fix your windows. Is there anything for either school districts or towns where they have buildings that are problematic that we can go to the state and just say, hey, we need a whole new set of windows, et cetera, where maybe we only pay like 30% or?
So MSBA, their SOI window actually opens on Monday and that's really what we talked about with Hardwick about the roof. But they have programs for roofs, they have programs for windows and doors, and they have a heat pump program. There are certain conditions that you have to meet to be eligible. Like you can't quite do your windows and doors at the same time as your roof. And if you need a heat pump and your roof is of such an age, you can't do that, you know, things like that. So MSBA is one way of getting those things done. And they just sent out today, as a matter of fact, fun fact, a list of other opportunities for additional funding or funding projects in a, in a different way. But they're typically large-scale projects. You know, like if you're doing your windows and doors, you're doing all your windows and doors. But there are different ways. I think, Kevin, did we do some windows with? Some windows in one of the buildings, is that what you're saying?
In New Braintree, a couple of years ago, they did a weatherization project where they placed a lot of the gaskets around all the windows and doors and that type of thing like that. That might be an opportunity for Hardwick. Hardwick situation's a little different than in Braintree's where the vapor barrier in between the two panes of glass has basically let go. So you can see it between, you know, the moisture and all that in all of the windows in there. Are they necessarily leaking air in, not like New Braintree was? But all the gaskets are gone and Hardwick's, I guess they have been for years. So there possibly is an opportunity to go through green communities for something like that. Braintree was reimbursed some money for the weatherization project that they had done.
Is there, and like it was Leo saying, is there any other lead? Like maybe, you know, a green community perspective or the old seeder perspective? I'm just curious, were there other programs when schools could fit into?
There are, that's what I was saying. So we got a list of them today.
Okay.
Yeah, so there are some out there. It's mostly from municipalities and schools. So there are some out there that MSBA is putting, they put together a list because.
The needs.
The needs, they're anticipating a huge request this year. They're now only going to open that SOI window every two years. So. Yeah. So it's going to be competitive. I think that's what we have to think about. And I know when we met with Hardwick, that was sort of one of the questions they asked. They said, how many other buildings in the district are going to be going for this money at the same time? You know, so I think that's something we have to think about with our capital planning. So where are our needs and how do we sort of map that out so that it's benefiting all of our towns and schools at the right time?
That could be, I mean, that's a, it's everybody's problem, but the competitiveness, it's almost like the state should say, okay, here's an amount of money for everybody. I mean, it just seems like the whole competition thing is, you know, you find you get somebody who's the best writer.
Well, I was actually thinking about that.
But if you get somebody who knows how to write, then you're going to, you're going to get the grant, whereas maybe others who have greater needs, et cetera. It just seems like there should be a pot of money, maybe that's what we speak with our reps about, that should be a part of money that everybody could add at least a percentage of something, you know, to help them.
Also with, I know with MSBA money, they came out and they inspected New Braintree's roof. And they want to know how old it is and, you know, they say, if you're not this old, we don't want to talk to you yet. You know, so, I mean, I think they go with need-based first.
And Peggy, you just said, you're right on target because Mr. Schenner been last night, as we were talking about this too, said, you know, make sure, you know, please think of New Braintree too in the mix here. And, you know, Colleen said absolutely.
Right.
But then there's those restrictions that if, if your roof is less than 20, 25 or 30, whatever the number was, you can't write, you're not allowed in.
Well, I think this year's, the year, this year and next year's, when New Braintree's at that 30-year mark, so they're probably preempting, you know, thinking of that.
Exactly, that's what.
Because that has been looked at a couple of times with Cheryl, we, with the whole process of.
And with Sheila, and with Sheila, yeah, yeah. And so.
But no, the need-based people, like the windows, if that was a bigger need, they're putting right to the top if you show a greater need.
Yeah, yeah, so when they get all of the requests, then they start to go out, look at the projects, review. You have to provide all kinds of things. But they send a team to look so they can determine who they're going to fund first.
So.
There was days when money was a lot greater, a lot more projects, but.
Well, thank you for the update and I know that you'll come up with that capital thing doing.
Right, yeah, I, I think the thing that we really need to work on is the press box.
Yeah.
It involves people's money and it's something that we have to figure out some kind of way to pay for it.
I think at some point we have to put it to the towns.
Well, that may be, that may be the solution. And I think the towns could do it if we did it over a number of years, but.
Yeah.
So we do actually have some numbers, so I'll, I'll share rough numbers with you. At first I was really excited because I saw the price of the bleachers and I thought, wow, that's really not bad. Then I looked at the price of the press box with the bleachers, but it's about 230,000 to do the bleachers with the installation, but it's another 200,000 plus to do the press box with installation. And that's not including site work and all of those other pieces. So, you know, we're talking.
So that's just to get the actual existing structures.
Yeah.
Got here and installed, that's no site work or anything else like that or removing the other ones or anything. So your total's about $434,000 before site work, before any electrical pole needs to be moved, anything like that. The rough numbers back in 2020, that was provided by a consultant for site work just for the press box section was 93,000.
It must still got, oral aid was still restricted to use it in some physical capacity for buildings and grounds?
It's to improve challenges. No, not necessarily. You know, we can, we could talk about that, but it is to enhance your ability for different things, whether it's academics or efficiencies because of your rural nature, right? So we have used it on the purchase of the vans because of our rural nature. It has saved us money with athletics, things like that. So that, that's the premise for the funding.
What about grants for like disabilities? And I mean, that's not a very accessible area for families with disabilities. Would there be any available through that to look at to make that safer and more accessible?
Perhaps.
I honestly, I can't say. Right now Hubbardston is undergoing an ADA evaluation. Yeah.
So.
That's what made me think of it.
I would say generally no though, because. I would say generally no though, because when we redid um the bleacher seats for the gym, the the middle high school gym, we have to have accessibility there. My recollection was there was no special things, we give you an extra few thousand to handle that aspect of it. So unless something new has come out, I I don't think.
Yeah.
Okay, we we hear the need, we've been talking a couple of years on that and, like you said, you work with administration to see what the next steps will be along with Kevin.
I mean, personally, I'm a fan of the capital stabilization account because, um, you know, for a couple of reasons, like having a savings account and even, you know, and and we look better to um people who might lend us money too, because they they tend to favor people that have.
Things unneeded.
Trust, capital stabilization, things like that is beneficial to us here for interest rate reasons too, so. And not to mention, it's just forward thinking, I mean, you know, I, one of the things that every year we do our budget, we have capital projects in there in the first budget and then they're one of the first things to go. And I agree with, I I agree with those maneuvers, but, you know, if we had a capital stabilization account, we might be able to put a little money in it every year and get some of those projects done, because eventually that stuff has to have to be done. That's just my feeling on how to pressure anything.
You know, you know, because we were kicking some plenty of cans down the road over the years, so. Okay, and any other question for Walter? Thank you, uh before we go to policy and review, I just wanted to ask, uh budget, Mark, any update? Or I know your schedules are.
Yeah, we have, actually, I think we gave up a schedule last, last meeting and our first meeting is. It's good to have the a- advanced meetings with the towns and the administrators, because I think, because I was driving home last night, I was thinking that, you know, if anything, I I think they understand what the situation is. And and the thing that came clear was it, it's really the state.
Yeah.
Not pulling up the amount of resources that we need and it's not just us, it's four hundred and thirty towns we talked about last month. It's uh, it's gonna be interesting, but I I I think it may uh maybe a little more understanding.
Okay, so twenty eighth, um, policy review, review and reform.
All right. You'll be very pleased to know that this month is just taking a bunch of items off of the table and adopting. B H E is an updated language, E F C is updated language, E H A A new, E H B new, G B E E new, J I C J is new, K D C is new, and E B C F A is a recent. I make a motion that we take all those off the table and adopt them.
Second.
Second, okay, uh any further discussion? We've had it posted for thirty days and it's off the table, um, roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Afonso?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Um, unfinished business, the regional agreement update. Uh superintendent mentioned last night, we spoke with the municipal reps last night. And as the superintendent said earlier, um, we're sending notices out similar to what we did before. And we'll go through here through uh through a guided process through uh the lawyer, Mr. Dupree, attorney for Russ Dupree?
Yep.
Okay, Russ Dupree, along with the superintendent, um and we'll get the uh committee together. And we have representation from each of the towns of the school committee. And well, like as superintendent mentioned, we'll have a representative from the uh select chair of the select board and then another member representative that would be a silent member.
Yeah, we, the way we left it with the towns was we would allow the select board to decide who they sent. So it, we're assuming it'll probably be a select board member.
Or finance.
Or finance, um, but they can choose their person, we're not gonna choose, you know, tell them who they have to send to us, so.
And remind you, you said you sent something to legal already, did you just send our original?
Uh, they, our council has reviewed our regional agreement and in reviewing it, he felt really good um about what was in there. We talked about a couple tweaks based on past experiences we may wanna make. Um, but he said he thought it would be a really great proactive strategy to send it to Desi now. Because what can happen is when you make changes to the regional agreement, they red pen it up, so to speak, and then they send it back to you. So he thought it would be really great to send it ahead of time so they could flag any areas of concern. So we'd know that upfront rather than being surprised later. Um, he has a lot of experience with regional agreements, which is why we're we're gonna use them, um, but we feel really good about it.
And we use them back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, when we updated two thousand fourteen with uh was Mr. Dupree's father was the facilitator back in two thousand thirteen when we did that. And again, for all, because we have new members in the school committee here, thank you, we became educated, we're continuously, we talk about continuous improvement, we talk about continuous learning. We asked our teachers and our staff to do all that, we do that ourselves too. So we updated ourselves not only with the regional agreement, we also had Mars look at it. Um, both the attorney as well as Mars has said, you have a very good agreement, it's ninety nine percent done. There are some tweaks that could be done and as we mentioned earlier, let have a discussion, let's see. Do you do wanna do a three-year rolling average? Do you do that? I don't know, but at least let's move through the process and 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 make those potential, possible, possible, potential changes. Because we have a very strong, strong, good regional agreement, so. Um, and again, uh the folks here that are said to participate and I truly appreciate it, Deb, Dave Deschamps, Peg, Bristol and uh Crystal.
Peggy.
Peggy, Dave, Deb, Walter. From okay, so there are the five, okay. Um, so thank you. Um, public comment, do we have anybody?
I have no one on online for public comment.
No public comment, uh school committee concerns. Is there a public comment?
No, thank you. The only public comment is I've been, I'm enjoying the, uh, I'm, I'm enjoying the process. And you seem to be doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that the town of Barry gets to have a s- a place on the side for the annual town meeting and a special public meeting, that's really appreciated.
You got it.
Thanks.
Uh, school committee concerns, any members, uh, Lee?
So uh to follow on last month's conversation regarding uh lack of JV girls' basketball. So the superintendent and I sat down with the athletic director a couple of days after he came back from his um uh get together with the director of Wizards down in Texas. Um, and and so we had a very good conversation, running conversation, so. Way I can break it down, so in a way, let's break it down almost to macro versus micro. And by macro, I mean what's going on kind of all across the country. You know, we haven't worn masks for two or three years, so everybody kind of forgets about COVID. But we have COVID bubbles that are working their way through the school systems and districts. And um and it works in sports too, so you have to figure that, you know, if we had a kid, maybe a sophomore, junior, who's been playing a sport the whole time or since early fifth grade and they miss a year of it, they're going to pick it back up. So they, as a junior or a senior, it's like, yeah, I'm back at basketball or baseball or whatever. But you look at the area of fifth, sixth, seventh graders where maybe they're just starting to do something and they may have done it for a year or even a couple of years, but now you get this COVID bubble there where it's like, you know, I don't do this for a year or maybe a couple of years and now I really have lost interest in it. And so the bubble's working its way up, not not just clubbing, but but throughout the system so that you have an area of maybe sixth, seventh, eighth graders now, maybe ninth graders who have just walked away from the sport. It's sort of like, oh, there's something else to do, um, my friends are doing something else, yeah, I played basketball in fifth to sixth grade, but I lost interest in it. And so it seems like that bubble is working its way through and 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 part of that bubble is is being a clubbing and and as in other schools too. Um, Mr. Myville pointed out that, and I believe it was Murdoch, Zach Colley, was it, what he said? That they haven't had a JV team for three years now because they just don't have the girls. They've been pushing for the middle school and trying to get the middle school teams going so that they can work their way up, but they just haven't had any numbers for a JV team. The other thing, and it and it spun off from what he was doing in his meetings, is he met with um, there were, there were presentations made by college athletic directors from some pretty heavyweight colleges um and student services, and they were bemoaning the fact that under the new, the the NIL program where, you know, athletes can now make money. He said they're doing interviews of high school kids and he said, they're all, they're becoming just so one dimensional. So we're looking for kids, not just, you know, I wanna play in your basketball program, but what else do you do? And he said, five, ten years ago, it used to be whether they, they might have played a soccer during the fall or baseball during the spring. Or if they didn't play a sport, it was like, you know, I do, I'm in a kayaking program in the summer or I, or I train horses or whatever. But he says, we're, we're not seeing those dimensions, we're getting these one dimensional kids now. And he said, it's very frustrating because that's not what we're looking for. I mean, we want you to be good in your sport, but we want you to be doing other things. And and so these college athletic directors were were bemoaning that fact. And then uh Mr. Myville was saying, you know, he sees it here, he says, you know, I've got, there are three or four girls, he, I know personally, who could be playing JV basketball and they've played basketball and they could be, but they're kind of soccer girls and now there are a number of indoor winter soccer programs. He said, a lot of these kids are going to that so that they're not playing for their school, they're playing in these soccer programs. And I guess they can play, you know, two games a week or something like that. So he said, that's going on. And then when he was talking about that, I guess, later, I thought about it, I said, I'm thinking, okay, I mean, this is beyond me now, but if I'm a parent and let's say I have nine to ten year old girl, or it could be a boy, but we're talking JV girls' basketball, so let's talk a girl, and she's athletic and she's involved in a lot of stuff. And maybe as a parent, I'm thinking, oh, I see the mill stuff, of course, all parents want their kids to get athletic scholarships, so. All right, well, let's see, maybe she really wants to play soccer, so let's just push her in doing soccer, soccer, all soccer and not doing anything else. And and so these kids are not just getting, they're not getting rounded out, they're just like dynamic into into their one sport. But for a parent, it almost makes sense, especially against, I hate to say it, against basketball, because, you know, on the soccer field, how many kids are out there? Is it eleven, eleven at once, okay? Um, um, you have track and field, there are a number of things you can do, I can do the two hundred meter, four hundred meter, maybe a high jump also. And so you can, you have a number of choices for your child to to be out there doing something. Basketball court, you got five kids on the court, your daughter has to be one of the top five kids for three or four years in high school to hopefully get that, you know, scholarship, whatever. So if I'm a parent thinking, well, one out of eleven, you know, she has a better chance than one out of five. I mean, I can understand, I don't agree with parents thinking that way, but I guess I can understand it. So that's, that's kind of the macros. So the micro part is so that last year, we had six girls on our JV team, six girls, which obviously you have one sub in that too, so that wasn't really great. Four of our seniors graduated last year from our our basketball team.
Players too.
They were, and so four of the JV girls moved up to the to the um varsity. And so I'm not even sure if he said the the remaining two JV girls even wanted to come out. But pretty much he said that essentially wiped out the JV team. And we talked about, and and like I said last month, when when my son was involved in soccer and they brought the eighth graders up to play JV and and it worked out very well. And that was a decision they made. And he said, what we're looking at now is, he said, we had a, we had a good response from the middle school. We actually kept fifteen girls on the team, which we don't normally do, but because we had a good response, our thought is that if they're coming back and we can keep them together, then then they they work their way up through the program. And so, you know, it was, it was a programmatic choice, he said, he said, we didn't take it lightly, but he said it was a programmatic choice and we're kind of putting our resources in 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 that middle school now, hopefully to get them to move up. The other thing he said was Q Y B L and Peggy maybe, you know, he thought there was, there were like a bumper crop of kids going out for a Q Y B L basketball this year.
This year, yeah.
And he said, so it seems like the interest is getting back there and we're hoping to get some of these kids up into our programs as they get to, you know, seventh, eighth, ninth grade, et cetera. So um, you know, he he, you know, he understood, we, you know, we 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 chatted about a number of things and um, you know, I guess it's just, I guess, a combination of things, but um, you know, it it sounded like the reasoning was logical for the approach they took. And so that's, that's where we're at on that. So we were, you know, we were comfortable with with the way it was explained. I mean, I thought maybe from my perspective, maybe they weren't as uh communicative as they should have been to the superintendent to say, hey, this is what's going on and this is why we're doing this, et cetera, as opposed to just saying to her, oh, this is, this is going to happen. So, you know, once again, sometimes communication, we we always talk about, we really want people to communicate, and we have a lot of people who do, but sometimes in in the in the rush to do things, you think you're communicating enough, but but maybe you're not, so, so that's where we're at on that.
And thank you for bringing that up and both the superintendent and you to follow through and say you come back this month, tell us.
Can I just add one more thing to that? It really isn't about JV basketball, but I just wanna share with you something that we're starting to see that I think is aligned with actually what um Mr. Myville was talking to us about a little bit. But we're starting to see, we're concerned, um, that we're beginning to see some of our uh talented athletes trying to school choice to other school districts and some of them are not not close. Um, and in one particular recent case, um, you know, we really have reason to believe that they're going for sports. So to your point about parents wanting them to be one dimensional, they're also seeking the strongest teams to put their students on in high school. Um, and so there is a clause that if students school choice to another district to ensure that it's not for athletics, they have to sit out for the first season. However, parents can appeal that, um, and then you have to sort of state your case. We've been involved in a couple of appeals and it actually hasn't gone our way, they've allowed the students to play. So um, I just wanna put that on your radar because you might be hearing that. Um, and you know, the students have to state why they're choosing to school choice to another school. Um, and and I don't, I wanna be careful how I say this, right? Because I I want all kids to be successful where wherever they are and if they're struggling, you know, I, that is why we have school choice, right? Um, but it's just, uh, I just wanna bring it to your attention in case people ask you about it, um.
What sport for these kids?
It's, it's been varied, to be honest with you, Dr. Allen, it's been varied, yeah. Sometimes it's softball, sometimes it's basketball, soccer, yeah. And, you know, sometimes it's not that our programs aren't strong. Sometimes it's they play on these teams with students um from other school districts and they get to know those students and those coaches and they're actually involved in a different uh school-based team. So it's complicated and I think, I know Mr. Myville is uh very, he 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 teaches all, you know, all of his athletes like his own kids and um he's really communicating with families and trying to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to support them in our programs. Um, I think we'll hear more from the M I A A on some of this because if it's happening to us in Quavon, my guess is it's happening to other schools across the state as well. So I just kind of wanted to put it on your radar while we have a couple of extra minutes and we're too late.
Mark?
Yeah, I I think, you know, I think parents have to be a little more realistic about their kids' opportunities for uh scholarships as a result of of basketball. Because even I was involved in A and U back in the early two thousands, with some really good Central Mass girls' basketball players. When you went to Nationals, right? They last, not even not even close. I mean, Massachusetts is not really a hotbed of high school basketball, whether it's Central Massachusetts, Boston, or whatever. There's a few good players who wind up with scholarships. But parents are totally unrealistic. You wouldn't believe what I listened to at these, you know, A and U games. And your parents complaining about their kids not getting time because they were college coaches on the sidelines. It was just, you know, it was just unbelievable. And the reason you should have your kids involved in sports is really to structure their time so they actually are involved in something productive. And actually, it's been said that they do better from a homework perspective, from an academic perspective, when they're on sports teams. Because then they have to structure. I mean, a lot of parents are really unrealistic.
Well, I do think that community piece and feeling part of a team is is part of it too, for some kids, you know.
But that's something that's, thank you for like telling us to be mindful about.
Yeah.
And also, I am curious about that M I A A appeal piece, because you're right, you had to be out one semester, correct?
One season.
One season.
And they can't even do that.
The other thing is that, so under M I A rules, so we have, I have heard anecdotally that if parents had pulled kids from out of our school because, oh, we're, you know, we're so strict, they have to study too much, they have to get these grades, et cetera, et cetera. But the thing is, under M I A rules, if 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 they pull the kid out, if the parent pulls a kid out, let's say, after a year, so it's a basketball kid and pulls him out and puts him in another school. If the other school has is more lenient in their grading, that school still has to adhere to what our grade system was before that kid can play in that sport. So if if if, well, let's say it's football. So if at the end of June, they switch schools and the kid has, let's say, failed under our system, whatever, so we would not allow them to play for the next quarter or whatever it is. That kid can't just go to the school and say, okay, I'm starting a new thing. I can play football. If that's adhered to, now whether the gaming school is looking at that stuff, I don't know, or whether we're stringent to say, let's follow this kid to see if that, if they're complying with us. I don't know that either. I mean, I don't know how the rules, well, the rules are following.
Dr. Allen?
I think they, I think they do look at that information, especially if there's an appeal. Yeah.
I know in colleges, they get money. Have we heard anything about?
No, I don't. I don't think anyone's getting.
Clearly, it would be as stable.
Yeah, no, I don't. I don't think anyone's getting paid. And, you know, and I, in all fairness to all kids, because you know, that's where my heart is, is there may be very logical reasons. I think the M I A A has worked hard to sort of put some things in place so that it would be, it wouldn't be that kids were going there for athletics. And I would never want to take an opportunity away from a student because you know, we believe, you know, as Mark said, right, kids do better when they play. But it's just, it's it's a little messy right now. I think maybe they started out a little more stringent and now it seems to be happening more post-COVID than it than it did prior.
Walter?
Oh, I didn't know. I can't on it. I don't think there's really anything new because my son, who's now 44, he was in high school, he was in high school in Northfield, very small town. And kids would go onto Greenfield because Pioneer didn't offer football. They offered soccer. So the kids would go to Greenfield because they wanted to play football. So I mean, this transfer thing isn't really a new thing, I don't think. It's just, I mean, the rules may be stricter now than they were back then. But, yeah, I mean, it was going on 25 years ago.
Yeah. And I mean, that's why we're so thankful to Gardner to have the partnerships with, that we have with them, right? So our kids can play hockey and our kids can swim. And so we are really thankful and we feel like that's the way to do it if we can, right? But
And over time, we've helped Northbrook Field out, but kids come in and play with us. So but yeah, thank you for giving us that heads up. Anybody else on school committee concerns? On Zoom? Okay, just a couple more items. New business superintendent?
Yeah, so we had intended to put in front of you tonight the school year calendar for next year. We sent three of them to the Q R T A to look at. And they got the results back. We were prepared to share it with you. But once we kind of looked at the description of how the teachers voted on it, we really felt like there was a little bit of lack of clarity on a couple of the calendars. So we, the vote was so close, we suggested that they go back, give them the opportunity to look at them again and come back to us with those in February. We feel good about all three options, but we'll look at it in February.
So we'll hold that to.
Yep, yep.
FY 25 budget transfer?
So internally, we've been looking at the current year's budget, trying to trip all the accounts, make sure that we know where everybody is. Everybody's making their right amounts of money, all of that stuff, and accounting for any of the staffing changes that took place from last spring when the budget was put together over the summer with resignations and retirements and changes and program shifting. But we're not quite there yet because it turns out 1,100 lines is a lot. And with me being new in the role, it's taking me probably a little longer than it would if if I had done this before. So we hope to have those for you next month. But we want to make sure that we have this year's budget as tight as possible since we use that as one of the starting points for next year's budget.
Okay, we can hold that for next month.
Yep.
And I just, I sat down this evening, received from Jess and superintendent, which we were able to do, but there was an email that the DECA, there was an email that they received, right? The competition?
They participated and some of the kids are going to states.
Understate. And so under the emergency unexpected agenda item, because it's time sensitive, we can add it. The motion would be to approve an overnight trip to Boston February 27 through March 1 to participate in the state DECA competition. So move second. Okay. Any further discussion on that from the superintendent? Anything on that? Anything on it?
Oh, no.
Great opportunity. And this is the second year for them?
Third year, actually. Third year.
Third year for that.
Yep, we're very proud of that program.
So even though it has to be, they need notification ASAP.
How many students?
I don't, they didn't tell me how many. I know there was more than one.
And we'll hear from them when they tend to come and present.
I know. I know there are at least two.
I don't have that.
I think so.
So the motion is made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Afonso? Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. There's no request for executive session. Our motion to adjourn. Adjourned and done.